Welcome to the Hammond City Council Agenda Public Hearing.
Johnny Blunt?
Here.
Jason Hood?
Here.
Bobby Martin?
Here.
Lamar Marshall? Mike Williams?
Here.
Public Hearing, Number One. An artist to accept a one-year maintenance bond, number 016056774, in the amount of fifteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars for water and sewer public improvements within a fifteen-foot utility service to a fifty-foot private access service to requested by Chick-fil-A, located at nineteen twenty-five Southwest Railroad Avenue,
This is Chick-fil-A, they're finished and wrapped up officially now. It was delayed the official completion date because of landscaping. When they were wrapping up the project, it was a bad time of year to plant the trees that they were required to plant. So they bonded out the landscape and waited to plan it to a more favorable time. They now have everything in, the job is actually complete and full. So now it starts the maintenance portion of the utilities they install. That's what this is.
Any questions from the audience?
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Number Two. An artist to set official holidays for the city of Hammond for the fiscal year 2014, 2015 for non-civil service employees as follows, and you can see that on your agenda. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. President, and to the council. These are the same holidays that we observed last year. If you'll remember, the council was good enough to add Columbus Day to the approved holidays for last year. So this list of thirteen holidays is the same holiday... This list is the same list of holidays that we had previously.
Any questions from the audience? Thank you, ma'am. Now we will go into our regular session.
Johnny Blunt?
Here.
Jason Hood?
Here.
Bobby Martin?
Here.
Mike Williams?
Here.
I invite you to join me in a moment of silence and contemplation as we turn our attention to Almighty Creator God, and thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us. And we thank you for all the days of our lives. You have called each of us by name, and you have called us to service, to service to follow in your footsteps. We thank you for this council, for the mayor, for those other elected officials, for the farmers, for policemen, the doctors, the nurses, all of those who serve all of us during all these times in our lives, which can be very critical. We thank you for this good community that you have given us, this Hammond, Louisiana, USA. We ask you continue to bless our city and our citizens. We call upon the Holy Spirit, the guide, those making decisions, to like to do so with wisdom. And, O God, we thank you for the privilege of being part of this great union of grace that you have given us. And we thank you for our great nation, for those who have defended our liberties for so long, both at home and abroad. We ask you to bring them out on safely, and that you fulfill all those special things we hold in our own hearts, those intentions for which we cannot verbally say for this time. We pray these things in the name of the One who saves and saves.
Amen. Thank you. We will have our pledge allegiance by Ms. Ani Hue Turner, Hammond Westside Montessori.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of no doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ani?
Very good.
Thank you very much for coming. Reports, any council reports?
Mr. President, I would like to yield my report time to Ms. Cheryl Klein, with, she's going to tell us about Tobacco-Free Day. Michelle, when we do, later on in the meeting, during the resolution section, we have a resolution for you as well. Going on?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Williams, Mr. President, Council, Mayor Foster. We've been in the area a little while, and I kind of wanted to just do an update and let you know what we've been working on in the Hammond and Tangipahoe area. As a reminder, my organization is a statewide tobacco control program whose mission is to implement and evaluate comprehensive tobacco control initiatives and prevent and reduce tobacco use and exposure to secondhand smoke. Okay, that's the official stuff. But we've been initiating various campaigns since January 2007, when the Clean Indoor Air Act went into effect. Nationally, Louisiana was the twentieth state to enact such a clean air ordinance and to pass such a law. The act made all workplaces smoke-free with two exceptions, freestanding bars and gaming facilities. And it also mandated K through twelve school campuses to be smoke-free. It was a great start. And we initially worked with all six of the school districts in Florida parishes to help them boost that smoke-free policy to make them tobacco-free, so that we can address the issues of smokeless tobacco and making those policies cover smokeless on campgrounds. Our first campaign was Let's Be Totally Clear, which I'm sure you've seen in various forms. And then we did one with Healthier Air For All and Secondhand Smoke Stinks, which is not one of my favorites. On the Move, however, is our newest campaign, which was filmed in Covington and began airing on TV this month. The campaign speaks more directly to the work we've been doing over the past couple of years. It informs everyone first and foremost that seventy-nine percent of Louisianians do not smoke, therefore twenty-one percent do. But that's a huge portion of our population that does not. Nationally, the smoking rate for adults is about eighteen percent. But in the ten years I've been working with Tobacco-Free Living, that rate's come down by a good seven percent, so we're making progress. As you know, secondhand smoke is extremely toxic, with seven thousand chemicals, two hundred toxins, and more than sixty known carcinogens. And the more we learn about it, the more we know how it negatively impacts lives both in the short and long term. Because of what we now know, our goal is to change the social norm and make smoking and tobacco use less acceptable. We're collaborating with community members, partners, and business owners to identify ways to provide healthier environments for people to live and work. I've been working with healthcare facilities, including a major regional hospital, to move to a tobacco-free campus. And that's one of two major hospitals in Saint Tammany Parish that still do not have tobacco-free policies, such as the one that North Oaks initiated and was the first in our region to have. But we should be able to announce that policy later this summer. I've also been working with Southeastern to get final approval for a tobacco-free campus policy, which is expected to begin on August 1st. It's only up for final approval. And North Shore Technical Community College will be also enforcing a smoke-free policy on grounds beginning August 1st, as mandated by a piece of legislation that came out last year in Louisiana. I've been working with bars throughout the region to promote smoke-free events. We help to spread the word when a business owner voluntarily makes his bar smoke-free by putting their information on our Healthier Air For All website. We're promoting Mule, I know him as Dan, over at Kate Street, who has made Friday nights his only band night smoke-free until midnight. That's a huge step for him, and he says it hasn't hurt business, and the musicians really love being able to play in a smoke-free environment. The Crescent has had a smoke-free last year, a smoke-free night last year, and then in July, they went to Smoke-Free Wednesdays. And Mr. Perkata just loved it. We're always willing to meet and work with any freestanding bar or lounge who wants to give a smoke-free night a try. We offer promotional support as well as some financial assistance for these events. Owners and managers are usually quite surprised at how positive the response is of patrons, musicians, and staff. We're a resource for and support cessation classes, such as those being offered at no charge at North Oaks Medical Systems through Mary Bird Perkins Cancer Center. The lunchtime classes actually start tomorrow, and there is available room for anyone that's looking to sign up for cessation. May 31st is the World Health Organization's World No Tobacco Day. In recognition of this worldwide observation, we wanted to let you know of our initiatives in Hammond, Tangipahoe, and the Florida parishes, and ask for your support to promote a healthier environment in which to live and work. We recognize and appreciate your past support by passing the Smoke-Free Bars Ordinance back in February of 2011. I've provided some information in these bags that I would love to give to you, and I thank you for allowing me to come and talk to you tonight.
Thank you, Michelle. Let's go ahead.
Yes.
Well, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I have this resolution to present to you on behalf of the council and the mayor, and our beautiful citizens of Hammond.
Thank you.
And World No Tobacco Day. That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll adopt that officially.
Okay, Vic, you want to announce it?
I'm not going to put you to sleep this year with a long, detailed report on the activities of the Keep Hammond Beautiful Committee. Quickly, though, Charles Barchers, who is in the grants office, worked up these numbers from September through May. We had four hundred and forty-six volunteers pick up litter at our cleanup days. Average number of volunteers was thirty-one point eighty-six, and I must say, many of them were junior high students, which I think is wonderful. We averaged two and a half hours per person. We picked up four hundred and sixty-two bags of trash, and the value in kind was twenty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars. That doesn't take into consideration what was picked up by the litter, jailhouse litter group and others. But what I'm here tonight to do, Whitney, is to present our annual...
O'Dory?
Okay, it is. Our annual Golden Pickup Stick Award. Can I invite Louise Foster to come up here? I've known her up here. I've known Louise Foster for many, many, many years. Unfortunately, she's already swollen with poison ivy tonight.
Oh, my God!
She, that is probably, she probably got poison ivy in pursuit of some kind of beautification project. Believe me, I know what it's like, because I've suffered from that in my share. Louise and her son John, who should get at least part of the handle of this, have been tireless in their efforts. They never miss a cleanup. They've helped preserve properties in Hammond that have contributed to the betterment of the community. And they are trying hard to get the community garden going. If enough of us can volunteer, maybe we can get that going. Louise, you have more than earned the Golden Pickup Stick Award in Keep Hammond Beautiful.
Thank you so much.
You want us to go around? Do you want to walk around and get next to her? Unless you do this. Let us know if you can see it, so...
I'm so sorry.
That's okay. Okay, three, two, one, and three, two, four.
I do want to say this. I thank the council for your participation in our leaders against litter. Believe it or not, we have made some great steps in awareness this year, particularly the parish council. In one of the meetings, E.J. Frigotson is here. We had nine parish councilmen show up. And more than one have said, "Our eyes have been opened to the problem, and the parish council is going to attack the little problem too." And I certainly want to thank the mayor's example, his leadership. He's the first one out there with his stick and bag. So I thank all of you for your support. We'll keep up the fight. I know we're not going to win. But on my way here, cigarette lady, Cheryl, I was over here on the corner, and a lady, a woman in front of me, turned into the service station pit, nice big long bucket that went out the door. And Barbara said she picked up two butts right outside the door of City Hall, and she came in.
And they had been stepped on a bunch of times, so everybody walked over.
There was an article today, the article about the fines of...
Has the governor signed that, Cheryl?
He's supposed to.
I hope so.
He's the last one, but we expect her to.
Mr. President, before we go on, let me also recognize the two former Golden Pickup Stick winners that are sitting together, E.J. Frigotson and Barbara McCaskill, not necessarily in that order.
And notice, I notice our three winners have all been women.
I would like to make one more distinction, that all three happen to be my constituents. Thank you, ladies. I take no credit. It's just a coincidence, but thank you very much, hon. Make District Five look good, and the whole city.
Yeah, not just District Five, the whole city, because, of course, it has been announced in the newspaper that we are the cleanest city in the state of Louisiana for the eighth consecutive year. What'd you call them, the criminals on the street, or whatever you just called them?
In the house, too.
The inmates, streets, parks, and all of the workers. So we thank everybody that has worked so hard on that. For some other business, I do want to announce that, as is required in the Home Rule Charter, we have sent the budget to the city council. The total budget is about a thirty-nine million dollar budget for this year. And we do believe that it's fully attainable, that we will have a balanced budget at the end of this fiscal, end of next fiscal year. A couple of other announcements. The building official, Nash Bono, has resigned from the city of Hammond. This is effective June 30th, but he actually has left the city. And in the interim, we have appointed Josh Taylor as the interim building official for the city of Hammond. He does hold a CBO, a Certified Building Official License, so he is fully qualified for that position, of which he has been appointed in an interim basis. I do have one announcement. Am I reading this, or you, Jenny? Okay. I have an announcement that I have to read, and this is concerning a public notice. We're going to be running this on the 23rd of May, that notices hereby given that a public hearing, followed by a regular session of the Hammond City Council, will be held at its regular meeting place, Lewis J. Tallow Building, located at 312 East Charles Street, Hammond, Louisiana, on Tuesday, July 1st, 2014, at 5:30 PM, to levy millage rates. And this is for the millage rates. This is a new requirement that we have this year in the law, that we make this public announcement that we will have a public hearing. So we have made that public announcement, that we're going to have a public hearing. A couple of other things I want to talk about that we will be having, or, excuse me, there is going to be held a back-to-school, excuse me, excuse me, summer safety bash, an end-of-school gathering. This is going to be at Mooney Park, May 22nd, from 4:00 to 6:00. Councilman, I'm sure you know about that. You're always there supporting that. Our fireworks for the city of Hammond celebrating Independence Day will be actually on the 3rd of July, but on the 4th of July, there will be a function in downtown Hammond. And this is the first time in a long time that there has been an actual 4th of July celebration. This is sponsored by a number of different people. We're excited to be a part of that. There will be music, food, games, vendor's cakewalk, and a 5K run. That's going to be on 4th of July, 10:30 to 3:00, in downtown Hammond. I believe that's all I have, sir.
It was a very good report, ma'am. Thank you. Okay.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, there is one other thing. And I don't know if you're going to have this on there, but we do need to have a public hearing date set for the budget, since we've presented it to you. Okay, you have that?
Yes. We can go ahead and announce it now if you...
It's your budget. I've turned it over to you.
All right. We'll move on to new businesses. Any new business? Yes, please come forward, give me your name and your business.
My name is Ravi Patel. And the new business I'm going to have is Old Hammond Oil Inc., which is located at 2201 Southwest Railroad Avenue.
That's Old Hammond?
Mm-hmm, Old Hammond Oil Inc.
Oil Inc.
It's a gas station.
Oh, a gas station, okay.
What's the address again, sir?
2201 Southwest Railroad Avenue.
What was there before? Is that where the Shell station was?
It's still Shell's gas station. They closed down, it closed down before a couple of months. Now we remodel and going to open it 29th of this month.
Fantastic, because then you could do cleaning up.
Yeah.
Any questions? Well, we definitely welcome you to the city of Hammond.
Thank you, sir.
And we do have some requirements, of course. And we trust that you will be obedient in making sure that your premises is always clean. No silvered butts. No butts, I'm sorry. No butts. And do that, and then you will be in good hands with Mr. Vic over there.
Sure. Thanks for that, sir.
Thank you. Approval minutes.
Second.
Johnny Blunt? Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Resolutions. Number One. A resolution of the Hammond City Council supporting the creation of Tangi Academy, a charter school to be located in Hammond, Louisiana, servicing elementary school students as proposed by the Tangipahoe Charter School Association, Incorporated. Lisa, profit.
Hey.
Good evening, folks. Well, we're back again. We disseminated the information from the last time we were here to y'all's email addresses. We didn't get any questions, so we were hoping we could just have the resolution moved, unless there's any questions tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. Make a motion to approve.
Johnny Blunt? Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Okay, new business. Number One. A resolution accepting OM Hammond Oil Inc., located at 2201 Southwest Railroad Avenue, for a high-low package alcohol approval as conditional pending water, sewer, health, fire, and building inspections. The owner of the business is OM Hammond Oil Inc. Jenny?
Yes, sir. And I believe you just met him. He was just up here. So that's going to be our new owner of this establishment. The applications for all of the alcohol and new business are in order. And as you said, we are asking for a conditional approval. We are waiting on the inspections for the fire, the health, the building, and the water and sewer. Maybe we need to add litter cleanup to it.
Yes.
But yes, we are waiting on those, and everything else is in order. And we do ask that you give approval for conditional, as long as they're all in order, once we get them. They are the old Shell station that's located across from the truck stop. I do have the representative here tonight, if you want to bring that up.
Yes, bring it back up, please.
Ask him some more questions.
Yes. Thank you again. Okay, sir, you know about the butts. Now, there's something else you need to be aware of, and that's alcohol to minors. Being a new establishment, you might get challenged. Young folks might want to come in and test you out. So, being an owner, you're going to be responsible. Make sure that does not happen. Make sure your employees are fully aware. No selling alcohol to minors.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, all right. Chief of Check.
Yep. Thank you, sir.
Wish you well.
Thanks, thank you.
Motion approved. Second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number Two. A resolution authorizing the mayor or the director of administration to sign the Second Amendment to Communication Site Lease Agreement between the city of Hammond and American Tower Assets LLC. Yes, sir?
I quite honestly have mixed emotions about this proposal, and, you know, I could go either way on it. But let me tell you what this is. This has to do with the tower that's located on CM Fagan. It's about a one-acre piece of property right there that the city several, I believe it was in 1998, initially leased this property to American Tower. You may also recall that about eighteen months ago, they came back to us and requested an extension on the lease. For that, they gave us twenty thousand dollars for the extension, and we extended their lease through 2033. Now they have approached us again, asking for six additional five-year renewal terms, or thirty years to go to 2063. I don't think I'm going to be here in 2063. But let me just tell you that they have, if we're willing to do this renewal, they are willing to increase their rental payments from about fourteen hundred and fifty dollars to seventeen hundred and eighty-eight dollars. So this increase, they're willing to pay us in lieu of the one-time payment that they did before. The one thing that we did negotiate with them is they wanted to set an increase, a fixed increase, of three percent. Well, we did not believe that it was the best interest in the city of Hammond to go to 2063 at a three percent rate. So we did negotiate with them that it would be any increase, and this is an annual increase, would be based on the Consumer Price Index. Right now, that's actually less than three percent, but there's no doubt in my mind that in the future, it'll be a lot higher than three percent when things turn around. So I don't know what this property would be used for, other than the tower. Do you know where I'm talking about, where it is? Right there, across from the sewer treatment facility. The tower is there, they have it to 2033. So my reaction is that we really don't have anything to lose, and we do get an increased rate right off the bat of about three hundred and fifty dollars a month. So, based on that, I'm standing here talking about it, I've kind of talked myself into recommending approval of this, simply because, again, we don't have any use of the property at this point in time. And so I would recommend approval.
Mayor, I didn't read the lease, to be honest. Do they have an out at some point?
They do. Every five years, they have an out. We have no outs.
Because, I mean, the way technology changes, I, you know, thirty, twenty years, now ten years, now cell towers, they've been thinking of that.
And if that's the thinking, then it would be to our advantage to go ahead and prove this, because we're getting a higher rate.
Was it a different company, Andrea? Same, same concept, they wanted a long... So there's got to be something behind it.
Well, I think what they're planning to do is to have some of their own long-term leases. And they can't lease longer than what they have the lease on.
So that they can sublease on the tower.
Absolutely. I think they have six or seven subleases on the tower. Next out I know is on there, I don't know who else.
Motion approved. Second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall? Sorry, Mike Williams?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion approved.
Number Three. A resolution to approve of the reappointment of the following to the Hammond Historic District Commission for the term to expire December 31st... District Commission for the term to expire December 31st, 2016. Scott Sandich, Barbara McCaskill, Marguerite Walter, and Ryan Falk.
Mr. President, to the council, we were approached by the Historic District Commission Executive Director, who indicated to me that we had several people that had not been reappointed. As a matter of fact, only one of the entire commission had actually been officially reappointed. She and I sat down, and this item, number three, and number four, had to do with reappointments. By law, the reappointments are actually for four years, so the terms of expiration are actually going back and making them, in effect, retroactive appointments to where the term will expire four years from their original date of expiration.
Make a motion to approve.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number four. A resolution to approve of the reappointment of the following to the Hammond Historic District Commission for the term to expire December 31st, 2017. Tom Historius and C. Howard Nichols.
Mr. President, the explanation is the same, and let me also add that all of these members have been outstanding members of the Historic District Commission. Sometimes it's not a popular job, but it's one that's very necessary, so I would ask for their approval.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Number five. A resolution to recognize May 31st, 2014, as World No Tobacco Day.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Okay. Final adoption of ordinance, none. New business, number one. Final adoption of an ordinance to accept a one-year maintenance fund, number 016056774, in the amount of $15,636 for water and sewer public improvement within a 50-foot utility servitude and 50-foot private access servitude requested by Chick-fil-A, Inc., located at 1925 Southwest Railroad Avenue, Zone C-H, SDF 2013-2-1.
So move.
Second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number two. Final adoption of an ordinance to set official holidays for the city of Hammond for the fiscal year 2014, 2015, for non-civil service employees as indicated.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
All business, none. Introduction of ordinance and set of public hearing. Number one. Introduction of an ordinance to adopt the city of Hammond budget for the fiscal year 2014, 2015, in accordance with the procedures set within Section 5-03 of the city of Hammond Charter.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Mr. President, would you like to set at this time a work session date for us, please, sir?
Yes, sir. It would be June 6, 9 a.m.
It's a Friday. That works for you, my Joe.
June 6, 9 a.m., right here in the council chambers. Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Number two. Introduction of an ordinance to amend the city of Hammond budget for the fiscal year 2013, 2014, in accordance with the procedures set within Section 5-03 of the city of Hammond Charter.
Make a motion to introduce.
Second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing is set for June 3, 2014.
Okay. Second.
See y'all next time.